I'd like to call to eat, order the Monday, August night, regular meeting of the Fall River School Committee. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Ms. Larvee?
Here.
Mayor Coogan?
Here. A salute to the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands on one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have two quick things to announce. Tom Corey is joining us on Zoom. And pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Citizens input, we have three tonight. First up is Colin Dias from Ray Street in Fall River.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the school committee. As of last meeting, I just want to reiterate, I hope all three citizens input, the two written citizens inputs are read in their entirety. Thank you again. I just want to say, I hope the school committee makes changes to the public comment that assure both the freedom of speech and for public participation of all residents of our city and abroad. I think the ACOU's letter clearly stated clearly that the school committee's rules and their policies were unconstitutional, they're illegal, and it's not legal to censor citizens' input. I would like to see the school committee relax its policies and just be in accordance with the law and the Constitution. We all have a right to speak without fear of retribution, censorship, whether we agree or disagree. And I will admit that I have concerns of the policy subcommittee reviewing the recommendations. Mr. Costa, who is the chairman of that subcommittee, has worked without effort to censor my citizens' input in the past. And I have my doubts that he wants to see citizens' input without any censorship. And I also want to take a second to address the use of schools in our community. I'll be clear. If the Fall River Falcons have to pay a fee, then Mimi Larvee and her organization should also be paying a fee. However, I know that Mr. Larvee's organization does great work in the community, along with the Fall River Falcons, and along with all of our great nonprofits. I don't want to see anyone paying the fee. At least we should have some checks and balances, where the school committee can discuss fee waivers in a public meeting, and have the opportunity to discuss and vote on these matters. We should adjust our policies to allow the school committee to have oversight over the use of schools. Either everyone should be paying the fee, or no one should be paying the fee. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is a letter from, uh, Deb, Deb signed it. Eddie Roachford from Wareham in the school department. My name is Eddie. I am not from Fall River, however, I have colleagues in Fall River, and I'm disappointed in how the school department is operating. Oh, I'm sorry, guys, let's do it. Motion to waive the rules.
Second.
Motion, second. Roll called, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. I'll start over. Good afternoon, members of the Fall River School Committee. My name is Eddie. I'm not from Fall River. However, I have colleagues in Fall River, and I'm disappointed in how the school department is operating. Why is everything censored at school department meetings? Why do they silence those they disagree with? And why is it the end of every meeting, they meet behind closed doors? And lastly, I wish to blow the issue on an issue facing the school department. There are text messages between Mayor Coogan and his brother, the HR director, discussing information about student cases in violation of FERPA. There should be an investigation. Also, why is Mayor Coogan texting Mark Costa, asking if there is an agenda item to quote on, quote, "Move on Malone now. A little birdie told me he recused himself." So how did he unrecuse himself? I hope there is a change in the Fall River School Committee. The students of Fall River deserve it. Eddie Roachford, Howard Street, Wareham. The other letter?
Yep. Did you want to read it now?
Yep. The next letter is Hal Levine from Lakeville. Good afternoon, members. I am happy to see the school committee finally address its illegal and unconstitutional public comment rules. Now, I have another concern. I am sad to see the Fall River Falcons have to have a, pay a fee to use the schools. We should work to help out nonprofits as much as we can. So if the Fall River Falcons are paying a fee, why is Mimi Larvee and her organization not paying a fee? The school committee should have authority on use of the schools. We should have a mechanism in place to have the school committee vote on fees for these NPOs, because it is not fair that the Fall River Falcons and others have to pay a fee, and the organization, the school committee members get to operate fee-free. Let's be fair. Hal Levine, Pilgrim Road at Lakeville. That's all for citizens' input. Next item up is item three, recognition awards. We have none tonight on the agenda. And item four is the superintendent's report. Superintendent Pot.
Good evening. So for, we have three items for updates. The first one is enrollment update. This is a fluid, a very fluid issue. This is a busy time of year at the Pace Center. We see a lot of registrations going late into August, right into the beginning of school year. But we thought we would give you an update as to where we stand right now. Currently, we have 10,172 students registered. We ended our year with roughly 10,100, so we're up a little bit slightly. We have 222 pre-K students already registered. And kindergarten, which was one of the, the enrollment was low last year. We already have 667 students registered. Last year, we had 680 for the year. Our target is to be around 750, 800. So, and I was meeting with Ms. Kudo. She thinks that we're going to have no problem meeting that target, because we see a lot of registrations late into August. Durfee enrollment is up also. They have a very healthy ninth grade class coming in at 629. Their enrollment right now stands at 2,299. They ended the year at 2,147, so they're up considerably. And we have healthy numbers at the middle schools and element, elementaries as well. Our special needs population is pretty static. We, last year, we ended the year at 26.6% students who needed special education services. And our projection is at 26.3 again, which includes, of those 26.3, 62.9 will be placed in inclusion, 29.8 will be placed in subseparate classrooms, and 7% are slotted to be in out of district. And our L numbers are pretty stable also. Currently, we have about 1,882 students enrolled, 17.84. Last year, we ended our year at 17.6%. We have about 831 students district-wide who are foundational students. And in SEI mainstream, we have about 1,051. And as I said, those numbers will change throughout the month. We will continue to keep a close eye on them, and we will keep you updated with our enrollment numbers. But that's where we are with enrollment. And the next piece is a hiring update. Again, this is fluid. We are seeing lots of movement. Our team continues at school level, as well as HR department, to process new hires. We currently still have 42 teacher openings, and that could be interventionist coaches, inclusion, ESL teachers. We have eight administrators, administrator openings. Four of them are department heads, two Saks and two VPs, and 10 other, which are SNON's instructional support liaisons to be filled. We are still working feverishly to open up staffed. HR's processing, processing people daily. I'm signing off appointment letters. So we are up and running and hoping that we're going to be staffed in critical areas by the beginning of the school year. And then our last update is on progress of Durfee. As you know, good news. We received our temporary certificate of occupancy on Friday, both for the academic core building, as well as the field house. Principal Demarest and his team are setting up their offices, getting ready for opening. As, if you're driving by that building, you're seeing landscape and hardscape progressing. There are changes every single day, both in front of the building, as well as in the rear of the building. We're continuing to see finishing touches being applied to the academic core. Ceramic tile work throughout the building is at 90% completion. The remainder of the exterior of the field house is being abated in preparation for the metal stud framing and hardy board installation, and this work is ongoing. Our sign, Durfee sign, is slated to be installed, hopefully by the end of the week. We are working to schedule an open house, so that people from the public can go and tour the building. That is, we're working at, looking at a date towards the end of the month in August. And total construction workers present Monday through Friday, average about 230, and about 100 on Saturdays and Sundays. There's also work being done at the old Durfee. All items to be moved to the new buildings are at 60% completion. Everything has been packed and is being moved across the way. All items being moved to other district buildings are 25% complete, and all items being auctioned off or disposed of are at 40% completion. We are repurposing some of the, especially the science labs. If you recall, there was a flood at Durfee a while back, and they replaced all those materials. And those are being repurposed at our middle schools and K-8 schools.
Excellent.
And that's it.
Mr. Agia?
Just a brief question slash request. With the kindergarten, I think you said everything was open, or everything is on track to have our kindergartens full. May I please request, maybe tomorrow, I know I didn't ask you this ahead of time, to get an update on the dual language program?
Yep, and I can tell you.
If you know it now, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I'm just curious to see where that's currently at.
Yep. I, actually, I have preliminary numbers. If you need something else, I will tell you right now, we have 22 students whose parents have committed to the dual language. And there is another info session on Thursday with 21 students whose parents are coming in to see if they're going to fully commit. But we already have 22 students registered for the dual language at Medeas.
And how many are we supposed to? Like, I don't remember.
Well, our target would be to have 25 in each classroom, so we still have some room.
So we got 21 out of 50?
22 already registered, out of 50, 21 whose parents are coming in. Hopefully, they're also going to be committing on Thursday, and then we still have a little bit of recruitment to go. I will let you know on Friday.
Yeah, let the whole committee know. I just think it's important to get, I mean, we've been talking about this for two years now.
Absolutely.
So it's, the time is, of the essence to get it done, so that other students get into those spots, kindergarten spots are tough to come by, and I know that. So I appreciate the info. Thank you very much. I yield.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Hart?
Just a quick question, Madam Superintendent. That's the, when you're looking at, from the street, from Elsbury Street to the right, it seems like that's the parking area, the parking lot. I'm just curious, you know, obviously, going forward into September, you're going to have Durfee, Conley, BCC, you know, Spencer Wardens around there, but very busy Elsbury and President Nav. Are we going to have, you know, ample parking in that area, on the campus to the right as well? And also, too, will they, will people be able to park on Elsbury Street, like, on the north and south side? I don't, I'm just curious if that's?
Certainly, Mr. Pacico can answer that better than I, but I know that there's parking off to the right, as well as to the back of the building.
Yeah.
So the new, the new lot, which is Lot A, will be close to 400 parking places, which is more parking than we normally use throughout all of the years that, you know, the old Durfee was in place. You also have parking in Lot B, which is the one next to the old main entrance. That's about 70, 75 parking places. And then the upper parking lot is about 400 also, the old Ray Street parking lot. Some of the construction, so all of the construction work, workers will be pushed to the other two lots, and that lot will stay primarily, the new lot will be only for the high school.
All right, and nothing can, I mean, people can't park on Elsbury Street.
So you can only park, you can only park on the east side in certain areas of Elsbury.
East, I'm sorry, east.
Nothing on the west.
Nothing on the west, right in front of the school.
Exactly.
Okay, good. All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, guys. Next is number five, student comment. We don't have one tonight. Number six, there are no minutes for your approval. Number seven, there are no travel requests at this time.
Motion to accept donations?
That's item eight.
Yeah, sorry.
I have a motion to accept donations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Why don't you read them, and then we'll vote, Mayor?
Okay. So, on behalf of Principal Brooks, $7,500 for resiliency prep from Project Lead the Way, also from Project Lead the-
I don't know if they changed it, I see, yeah.
It's still RPA?
RPA.
Okay.
Also from Project Lead the Way for Green Elementary School, on behalf of Dr. Dunn, $2,761. Also from Project Lead the Way for Henry Lord Community School, on behalf of Dr. Bronhard, $2,160. And from Project Lead the Way for Custom Middle School, on behalf of Principal Rouette, $1,999.50. And from the National Art Education Foundation for RPA, on behalf of Principal Brooks, $800.
I think Mr. Vice Chairman Costa's point was that it's now the Robert Medeas School. We don't, I think we took a vote on that already, but we'll make sure, change it going forward. I have a motion, a second. Do I, any further discussion?
Just clarify for the public. I'm not sure anybody heard what you were talking-
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Agia. Obviously, the Resiliency Preparatory Academy used to be its name. Now it's the Robert Medeas Academy or School. I'm not sure. Do you know what the official name is, Mr. Costa? Is it Academy or School?
Oh, it's Robert L. Medeas.
Resiliency Preparatory.
Okay, so going forward-
It's a combination of both.
Correct.
Correct.
All right, can we get a vote, Deb, please?
Sure. Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. We have a number of contracts on number nine.
Motion to approve contracts?
I have a motion and a second. Do I, I need a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on contracts? You want to-
Chairman, if I can just ask if there are commitments that are going to be made by way of grants, particular for the ESSR grant, because I believe that's to be discussed, that'll, agenda item, that I would ask that we hold on those until we had an opportunity to have that discussion.
I see one ESSR, about the fifth one down.
First one.
Two, two in a row, three. 31,011 and 14.
If I can ask through you, Madam Superintendent, or Mr. Almeida, are those requests that we're about to vote on part of the discussion item in the committee as a whole?
They, they are not.
They're not. So that's already ESSR funds.
So it's, this will come out of ESSR 1. We have funds available in ESSR 1. What's in front of you tonight, in addition to this, is the ESSR 2 application for approval.
Right, so you're asking us to expend money from ESSR 2, but we-
This, the items that are here in the contracts will come out of our ESSR 1 funds that are still remaining. The, what's in front of you tonight for-
It's just listed as ESSR. Doesn't say one, two.
Correct.
So I don't know where it's coming from, other than ESSR, but I don't know if it's one that we haven't approved yet, or?
I, I will clarify that going forward. It is-
So it's, ESSR 1.
This is one.
It's already money that we have that has been awarded to the district.
Yes.
Okay. I yield. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything further? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 10 is approval of grants. I think we have one grant tonight.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion on the grant? Deb, please call the roll.
Yes, I had one question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Agia.
No problem. The, so this is the civics grant, but in, I think it was another part of the motion was some money expended for civics. Is this the same, or is it, why would we not use it out of this, or I'm not just-
So, there is one contract on the contracts. That is the Generation Citizen Contract, which will be funding that contract, the 22,000, to come out of this grant here.
This is the same grant, so it's like, one of the same?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. I yield.
Roll called, Deb, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Okay, item number 11, committee of the whole, 11.1, is a discussion and vote to approve the revised academic calendar for school year '21, '22, as presented by interim Superintendent Maria Potts.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on it, Mr. Costa?
I do.
If we can just have-
I have one question.
Hang on one second, Tom. Mr. Costa was talking.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we could just, if I can just ask through you, Madam Superintendent, if you could just explain, because I know this is a revised academic calendar, some parents-
Yep.
-or community members who may be looking for information tonight about that topic, if you can just give us the highlights as to what's exactly been revised prior to our vote, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, as you recall, we brought in the spring a draft of the calendar, but we also were in negotiations with the FREA, and as a result of those negotiations, the calendar is being revised. Part of the negotiations is that we were able to, we were looking for more time on learning. We were able to, currently, in the past, we have had four early release days. Two of them are district-directed professional development days, and two are teacher-directed days. Two of those days were negotiated for us to take back the teacher-directed days, and in lieu of an additional professional development day added to the calendar. So as a result of that, we are, I am proposing that we, the two days that we take back are 12, 6, because we already have Christmas break. It doesn't make sense for us to have an additional half-day there also. And in, on April 4th, that was a scheduled half-day. We already have Good Friday and April vacations, so our kids would be coming to school full days on both of those days.
So, two, both of those will be full days now?
Full days of school.
And schools anticipated to start on?
September 1st for students.
Correct.
Right. And, and I will say, we apologize in advance to parents. They've been very patient, but we had to wait for this negotiations to be concluded. We will be posting the calendar after the vote today, so that parents can plan accordingly.
Thank you.
Mr. Corey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the only thing that comes to mind on the new calendar, Superintendent Pot, is Veterans Day comes on Thursday, November 11, which means that I'm anticipating that Friday would be a really high no-attendance day. It's just an issue that I thought maybe we could look into. I'm anticipating a lot of could be absent on Friday, November 11, given the holiday on the 11th. Is there any discussion on that matter, or is it just something that concerns me?
Well, it's a scheduled school day, so we would have to, if we were going to have a, give up that day, we would have to negotiate that with the union. So as of now, that is a scheduled school day, that Friday.
Yeah, I anticipate high, low attendance that day, you know what I mean? That's what I meant. And is there any way that, that it could be looked for PD day, Maria?
We already have two full PD days. Election Day is one of the days, and then we have the January at the halfway mark. That's a full PD day. If we were going to turn that day into professional development day, we would have to add a day to the calendar, because we have to have a minimum number of days for students. So we would have to- So, we would have to add a day to teachers and students.
Thank you. Again, I'll just reiterate my concern on attendance on Friday, the twelfth. I'm sure that the numbers are going to be, you know, low attendance that day with a lot of kids being home. Thank you, I yield.
Mr. Agia?
Just a point of clarification, I'm looking at the calendar that was sent to us, and it says Veterans Day is Wednesday, November eleventh, twenty-twenty-one.
The revised one that's in your, in the thing here says Thursday, November.
He's right.
So, are we?
Mr. Agia is right.
No, I'm just looking at what I'm, I'm trying to scroll through the, your, your dates, and I'm not sure if that is changed, like what? Was it just an error at the beginning?
Yes, it was, an error at the beginning, so it's not changed in board docs, we had to change it in the hard copy, so it's Thursday, November eleventh is Veterans Day.
Right, and I agree with you, there's not much you can do, I mean, it might be low attendance, but we want kids to show up every day, so. I yield, thank you.
Okay, I have a, do I have a motion, a second? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Sure.
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. Eleven point two is a discussion and vote to approve the revised start and end times for the school year twenty-one, twenty-two, as presented by Maria Ponce.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Superintendent Ponce?
Sure, if I could just explain, so as part of negotiations also, as part of our quest to add more time on learning, if you recall, we eliminated, expanded learning time, and our goal was to eventually make the day more equitable for everyone. This is the beginning of that work. We are, we did negotiate to add fifteen minutes to the day, which is yet another reason why the start and end times were not released and will be released today. We looked, Ken, Mr. Pacico, myself, Donna Cabral, sat down and looked at the impact of the fifteen minutes. We actually looked at the early start schools to see if we could start them a little later, but as you know, with tiered busing, the ripple effect is four or five schools. So, we thought the least disruptive way to do this would be to tack on the fifteen minutes at the end of the day for all schools. So, what you see is the revised end times and the start times remain the same.
Any discussion on start and end times? Deb, oh, Mr. Agia?
The, I know you said you looked at, obviously, we want to lower the transportation cost if possible, but is there any other items that would have saved money that we, you know, did something different with this? Or is it basically, we looked at it and this is the best we can do for savings?
We did, we looked at it, we charted it all out and tried to figure out how we could navigate through it and manipulate it so that we could, we know some schools start early. Certainly, it's late in the game for us to make major changes, so we thought this was the best compromise to be the least disruptive to families.
So, last year, we, was probably the, the year we had the best results as far as buses not coming to school late. As we were tiering buses every once in a while, because we were not capitalizing on a full one-hour in between start and end times on schools in order to tier. Last year, we had that full hour, sometimes hour and ten minutes, and we had no buses showing up at schools late. And that was the goal to begin with, because the late buses showing up to the school just creates chaos around that school. Parents are in the way for the buses to arrive, and vice versa. So, by not touching that piece and just adding the fifteen, kept all of the tiering in place throughout the district. And that tiering piece was that million, million and a half dollar savings when we put it in place.
Yeah, so the routing software is in, actively in use, and this is the best we can do with?
This is, right now, this is exactly the best we can do, and it changes slightly every year only because of population. So, we may, you know, have a boot, a route change, you know, because the two stops are not there anymore, because the students are no longer in that particular school, but other than that, it's, right now, it seems to be optimal.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're doing our due diligence, which apparently we are, so thank you for that, I yield.
Could we get a vote on that, Deb?
Sure. Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. Eleven point three is a discussion and vote to approve the creation of a vice principal position at the Cuss Middle School.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on that? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. Eleven point four is a discussion and vote to approve conversion of a coach to a department head at the Fonseca Elementary School.
Motion to approve?
I have a, I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the conversion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. Eleven point five is a discussion and vote to approve the creation of an ELA department head at the Viveris Elementary School, as presented by Tricia Witty at Viveris.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the department head? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Yes. Item eleven point six is a discussion and vote to approve a request for two full-time LPN positions for the district, as presented by Karen Long, the Director of Nursing.
Motion to approve eleven point six? Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on adding two LPNs? Mr. Agia, please.
Can we just, for the edification of the public, get an explanation of this particular item?
Mrs. Long?
I do think it replaces something else, so it doesn't look like a new positions, but I want the public to be able to digest what this actually is.
So, as I looked at what we did last year with the COVID pandemic, I thought it would be more productive and cost-effective even if we had two full-time LPNs in lieu of all the seven or eight CNAs that we hired last year. LPNs, of course, can do much more, because they have a license, so I thought that it would be better to have two licensed people in every school instead of the CNAs.
So, just, I'm reading from your chart, just for further clarification. Last year, we hired eight CNAs under a contract for a vendor.
Yes.
And this is basically almost going to be cost-neutral, or there may be a cost savings, or is it, we're still hiring those folks?
I would say cost, a large cost saving. It was probably over, I'm probably guessing about two-hundred thousand, maybe? Two-hundred thousand for the CNAs, and two LPNs would be probably a third of that.
I'm supportive of this, I'm just trying to, I know why I'm voting for this, because it makes sense, but we need to be able to let people know that this isn't new positions necessarily.
No.
This is taking something we did a different way last year, this year, we're going to do it in a more productive way.
Yeah, trying to make it better.
I assume that all of these LPNs work for you?
Well, they will be.
Under you, and you decide what they, the best needs they have in the district.
They will float, you know, just as some of my RNs do. But I also have had discussions with our city and with the Director of Health and Human Services, and there's been discussion about possibly trying to get some vaccine clinics in the schools. And this will help us with extra help for that also.
So, this, why I asked about the LPNs, all LPNs work for you?
Yes.
So you can decide what they do?
Yes.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Yes.
Anything further? Could we get a vote on that, please, Deb?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
I'm staying.
Mr. Hark?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Eleven point seven is a discussion and vote to add an additional five special education classrooms, as presented by Michael Loesch.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the classrooms? Want to let Mr. Loesch do his presentation, and then we go to Vice Chairman Costa?
So, just so I have the specific numbers, I'm just going to pull up the form very quickly. The first, really, and the easiest one to review right off the bat, is the request for the Stone School. Stones enrollment, especially at the high school level, experienced a significant increase in referrals with students returning to school. I think we're seeing a lot of the fallout from the pandemic, really, with students coming back into play. Currently, they are two over at the middle and high school level, along with two referrals en route as well from DCF of students that are returning to the area. So, they're already going to be looking at starting at the school year over capacity, with also little room for referral for students who are going to need that level of service. The other four classrooms were ones that we did discuss initially during our budget season. These are three ASD classrooms, one is a severe level, two are a, are step-up, are mid-level, as well as a social-emotional room at Doran, the Doran School, for, to make sure that their services for social-emotional go K to eight. These were ones that we did initially get approved through the budget, and we had some miscommunications throughout the process.
Any questions on the, Mr. Agia?
Was somebody first before, no?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, Vice Chairman, first, then you, Mr. Agia.
I would have yielded to Mr. Agia.
That's all, thanks for reminding me.
Thank you, Mr. Agia, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Loesch, so you're looking for five classrooms? Did I hear you correctly, one's going to Doran? Is that correct?
One at Doran.
So how about the other four? Because I know we're always under a, sort of a space crunch when it comes to?
And that was, that was kind of one of the looming questions we had at budget, was the location of the other three, which I think partly, part of led to the miscommunication. One is going to go to Henry Lord, we're going to keep our severe population consistent over there, and they've determined they have the space and a teacher allocated for it already. The other two are going to be at LaTerno School.
LaTerno. And we have plenty of physical space, that's already been looked at, identified.
Yep, we did a walkthrough very recently, we were there with the principal and the vice principal, we were able to determine that they are going to have space, and they'll be able to move forward, and it's going to be more than adequate, and also be able to serve the current students at LaTerno better, as well as these incoming students as well.
No.
With that, I yield, thank you, thank you, Mr. Loesch.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Agia?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. The, the last sentence, or one of the sentences in this list talks about the Stone School being at capacity. Says that the addition of the classroom is due to significant increase in referrals at the end of the school year. And my question on, for that, with the, I'm assuming that means the high school, or is that?
The high school and middle school levels, and I probably used too broad of a term on that. We were looking at referrals really from when we hit the majority in student return, really those months of early April through the end of the school year, we hit a significant amount of referrals at the middle and high school level for Stone.
So, my question on that is, are all of those referrals have IEP that calls for a day-school placement?
The majority, some are proposed evaluations to determine whether or not this student needs that level of service.
I'm not sure if anybody else, but I can't hear you, like, can you talk into that? For some reason, we can't hear it.
Okay, but now?
That's better.
Better. So, the majority of those students do have that per their IEP. We also have a, a number of students who are going to be there for evaluation purposes to determine whether or not they do need that level of service for their IEP.
If we could just get a report of the middle and the high school, how many students have day-school IEPs versus now? I know we've had this discussion at subcommittee level on whether we filled up, the district has filled up the Stone School with students that are just, have needs, but we created it as a day-school placement. I'm of the belief that we created, we filled that school up with students that do not have the day-school IEP placement. That's just my opinion, but the data will show whatever it shows when you get it to us.
So, I will certainly get that for you, but I can guarantee every student there either has it in their IEP or is under legal agreement with an evaluation consent pending for their evaluation to be completed there.
The, the other piece that I have with this, and I'm not sure how to address it, but the behavior therapist position at the Stone School, I've made my point, I think, pretty well to the administration, that I'm not a fan of the behavior therapist position as-is. I don't think that they have the same credentials as adjustment counselors, guidance counselors, and currently, in a lot of cases, they're making more money with less credentials than a person that has those licenses. So, I don't want to vote against this, because I do think that there's a lot of value in what you're presenting here. But I just wonder if we can pull that one piece, and I'd ask the superintendent for, you know, her advice on it, if that's something that we can approve, but talk about it further going, you know, in the future. I don't want to vote against all of these things personally, but I do think that the behavior therapist position, we have too many in the district, and we need to do something a little different with that.
No, and I totally hear you on that, and appreciate the feedback especially. I do think the Stone School is one, are one institution that uses that position highly effectively. They provide a tremendous amount of intervention and support to students and teachers at the school. They are used as really a centerpiece for behavior management at Stone. And I do, like I said, appreciate the feedback on their credentials and what they're looking at in terms of the structure of the position, and I think it is something we do need to look at in the future. But this is one piece for Stone I would definitely advocate for. Like I said, they use it highly effectively, they have a very systematic nature in looking at support for how many classrooms each person supports, the student caseload, to ensure that kids are getting what they need, as well as classrooms are being supported.
The, how many behavior therapists are at Stone, on staff?
K through twelve. I think we say, right now, this would make the sixth.
How many school adjustment counselors are at Stone?
We're adding one for this year.
How many?
We're adding one this year.
Yep, so how many does that equal, total?
Total between school adjustment counselors and BTs?
Nope, nope. How many adjustment counsels, school adjustment counselors certified by the Commonwealth are at the Stone School?
We're adding one this year.
And we had zero before?
Yes.
That's my point. So, we have six behavior therapists at the, at the day-school. We have, we had none, which is a shame, but now we have one school adjustment counselor. The way that I'm looking at this, we should change this particular piece, the way that we've been paying behavior therapists is more than the, than a school adjustment counselor. So, we definitely need more than one school adjustment counselor at our public therapeutic day-school. I don't understand why we just keep adding, in this district, we just keep adding behavior therapists, and we don't add the adjustment counselors, and they're getting paid, and a lot of times, it's, it's the opposite of what we were told. We were told all along the behavior therapists were going to start at a lower salary, and we're approving every, every, every meeting one comes up, making more money than the guy, than the adjustment counselors. I, I just don't personally see it, I think that's, somebody needs to weigh in on it from the, you know, from the district. I mean, those numbers are glaring. We added to six, and now we have one adjustment coun, like, I actually thought maybe, I, we thought we might have had two or three. The fact that we have only one, and we're asking for this, doesn't just, somebody, please tell me how this makes any sense.
Yep, so I totally hear what you're saying, it was a model that I came into. I will say, though, from my experience in working with Principal Shaw and the Stone School as a whole, it's undoubtedly one of the best public day programs on the South Shore by far. They have developed a model that undoubtedly works, it meets kids' needs, it keeps our staff there consistent. As you see, if you compared the turnover at that school compared to any other public or private day program, they're probably one of the most stable programs in the state. They have created something that works, I agree with you, that's why I advocated for a school adjustment counselor to be there for this next year, that they do need someone to also pick up some services on that piece, and provide that direct counseling. Previously to that, the school psychologist did a lot of that work, one-on-one with students. But, you know, as Stone grows, we're looking to really diversify the staff, that's why we also advocated for a BCBA to be there. We're looking to meet as many needs and as many challenging students, to bring them back into the city of Fall River, because this is where we should be educating all of our students, that, you know, we are trying to expand supports across the board. But Stone has in itself developed a very effective model, this is one component to it, which I do think, I agree with you, we need to review in the future. But as of right now, it is working very well in that capacity.
And did you say we added a BCBA under other parts of the budget?
Yep.
When they hired, or is that in process?
It's still going through FRA negotiations, but I'm told that we should be addressing that this week.
So, yeah, please.
So, I was just going to add, we are meeting with principals, so I certainly, we can, obviously, it's a model that is existing, people are using it in that position in different ways. I think that as a leadership team, we need to look at how we're using them across schools, and whether we need to make some adjustments to the position, behavior therapist versus a school adjustment counselor. So, we certainly will, our principals are the ones that have recommended those positions, so I think that we should talk to them, talk about how they're being used, and think about what that. what that means in the future.
So we'll get more info on it?
Absolutely.
Okay. With that, I yield. Thank you very much.
Anything further?
Mr. Hart? Just a quick question, Mr. Loesch.
Yep.
So you added a SAC this year. Prior to this year, when's the last time a SAC was at that school?
Stone previously has not had a SAC on their staff.
Not had one?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I get a vote on that, Deb, please?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, one other question?
Mr. Agia?
Just if I might ask, and I don't ask for this information now, but as we're creating these, what we're calling here, step-up classrooms and the like for ASD, can we please at some point get a report on how we're dealing with the inclusion aspect of, because I know you've talked about that at meetings, where there's sort of two tracks that we have to be on, but focusing on just these is one thing, but if we can get something, or maybe at the next special education subcommittee meeting, we get a, an answer on where we're going with inclusion first, so it's not just the go-to is ASD rooms and how are we doing that. So I'm not asking for the answer now, but just put it on your radar. Thank you. I yield.
Not a problem.
Thank you. 11.8 is a vote to approve the school committee delegate for November's MASC/MASS joint conference, as presented by Maria Ponce.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve?
Second.
And I have a second.
What are we approving?
We're going to approve whoever we pick to go to the conference. You want to go, Kevin?
No, I just didn't know if there was a name attached to it.
That's what I'm looking for.
Not yet. That's what we're looking for.
So, yeah, well, do we, do we have anybody that's interested in going to the conference this year?
The conference can, this year is virtual or, it's a hybrid model, so virtual or in person. We're looking for someone to represent Fall River Public Schools as a delegate.
Mr. Hart has volunteered?
So moved.
So moved. We have a motion, we have Mr. Hart, and a, and a second. Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I just have to check my work schedule. I was interested.
Okay.
I just have to give it another week or so. I don't know if we can make a decision in a week or two.
I'm going to say, Kevin.
Just to clarify, because we've done this in the past. So this is for the delegates, so the person would vote on maybe one or two pieces of language, but it is a valuable conference that multiple members can attend and get the benefits of all the sessions. So it might be, if two weeks from now, you know, you just let the secretary know, and we can add it.
That's what I was asking for.
Okay. So let's just vote to approve that we have. We have a number of people that can go, Ms. Larrabee and Mr. Hart, and let's just vote to approve whoever those names finally become. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification. So we're voting on, what are we voting on?
We're voting on whether we're going to send delegates, and we have one or two that both have volunteered to go.
But I think we need to choose a delegate. Yeah. Because I think we got to identify that, we have to identify that person as our delegate, and I believe Ms. Cabral needs to make the MASC aware of that, so that they know.
So we have a motion?
So we can do a primary and a sec, alternative?
Not a motion, but I, I mean, I'll vote for Mimi Larri.
You'd rather have Mimi go?
I just, no one was speaking up, so I just spoke out.
We can send one of them.
That's what I'm saying. I would just make a motion to send both.
How about we make a motion that Mimi is the primary and Paul is the secondary?
And we'll send both.
And if Mimi can't go, then Paul will go, and we'll get a delegate to vote on it.
All right. Let's, let's vote on that. That's making sense to me. I have a motion that Mimi is the primary candidate and Paul Hart is secondary. Do I have a second?
Second.
Go ahead and vote there, Deb.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Corey?
Yeah.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 11.9 is discussion and vote disclosure by Attorney Bruce Assad of the financial interests of immediate family members and determination by the school committee that financial interests...
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Is, I have a motion, a second, is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services, which in the school committee may expect of him, as required by Mass. General Law 268a, Section 19. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Could you please call the roll, Deb?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 11.10 is discussion and vote to review, a discussion and vote to review and amend the school committee's policy on public comment.
Motion to refer to policy?
Seconded.
I have a motion to refer public input to policy. Any discussion? Mr. Agia?
I just, we didn't get anything new. This is just to be referred, right?
Correct.
Where it says to review and amend, it's not amended yet. We're going to do it, and I'm not missing it.
It's going to policy.
Got it. Thank you.
Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 11.11 is a discussion and vote to approve enter into a lease agreement for warehouse space to be used by facilities and operations department, as presented by Ken Pacico.
Seconded.
I have a motion, a second, on additional warehouse space for the school system. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 11.12 is discussion and vote to approve ESER II grant submission, as presented by Kevin Almeida, our chief financial officer.
Motion, meet.
I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Mr. Almeida?
So what you have in front of you is the ESER II application with all the details of what was submitted to the state prior to the deadline of July 30th. The, the listing includes all the positions that were in the budget to include the original wish, wish list positions that were approved. In addition to that, it includes the positions that we approved tonight for the five special ed classrooms, to include the teachers' paras. And it includes $2.7 million of work related to the HVAC systems across, across the system. We had an HVAC assessment done, and so we'll be doing work with the HVAC systems. In addition, we have $200,000 set aside for the paper tutoring, paper online platform that we have set aside for tutoring for students. We have $200,000 set aside for the VoIP phone systems to, with that, with that purchase, we'll, we'll be VoIP fully system-wide with our phone systems. We're going to purchase an additional 2,000 Chromebooks, 1,000 this year, 1,000 next year. And finally, we put in for an additional 250, so for a total of 500 Promethean boards to be placed at our schools for, for kids with technology. And in, I, in the front memo, I provided you just a breakdown of what the total allocations were for the ESER funds, and, you know, the timeline and when we have to spend it, so with that.
Any discussion? Mr. Agia?
Just the, the point about recommending this and then looking at potential amendments going forward. I, for one, I, I know we had deadlines and we had to do certain things, but we also approved the budget, and we approved extra stuff. I am myself a little bit confused on where we're at, and I've talked to the superintendent about it. We're on the same page as far as like trying to figure out what we have. When I read through this, none of these are necessarily going to happen until we come back. Is that how I'm to read this? So this automatically, like, are we going to now spend all this money this way, or are we having another bite at the apple, per se, to...
So, so we have this money set aside this way. If there are changes that we want to make as a district, we can make them now. That's not, that's not an issue. And keep, keep in mind, we have the $39 million coming that we have to apply for in October as well, so we have another bite at, bite at the apple at that point.
So my question is, every single thing that's on this agenda, are we already filling some of these positions? Are this, is that already happening, and now we're approving the number? Where are we at with every one of these, whatever, however many positions, 90 positions?
So we have several positions that are already up, they're posted. Some have been filled, not, not, not all, but some have been filled, and we are in the process of filling the other positions.
But some may be repurposed. Like, we're not, we're not going to fill the district registrar right now, so that's not where repurposing the money, the funds for another position. So I think that those were the initial positions that were earmarked for these funds. We're going to be able to move and make some adjustments.
Right. So you're going to go through these, and if there's something that might not make sense to the principal or director, we're going to put the brakes on it a little bit. It's not necessarily tomorrow morning, we're going to go out and fill 96 of these positions.
Right.
No. It would never happen that fast anyway, but, yeah, no, we're not, we're not doing that.
Right. And why I ask is, there's certain ones that I think are, are more important than others, and I don't want to sit here and weigh in on every one of them, but at the same time, we, we should know, are we setting up things for the future? Are we, you know, the adjustment counselor conversation we just had, some of that info is on here. So all I'm looking for is that we will at least have discussions with committee members to figure out where we're going.
Yep.
Correct. Thank you. I yield.
Anything further? Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 11.13 is a discussion and vote to approve the year-to-date budget report, as presented by Kevin Almeida, chief financial...
Motion to approve the year-to-date budget report?
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the year-to-date budget report? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Agia, I missed you.
Just the, we're talking a month or two, right? We're not...
This is just a month. This is, this is through July.
My only question on it would be is, we've discussed this in the past about need transfers and those type of things, but looking forward going for this new school year, can you just articulate what we are looking at for, if things happen, the change in transfers and when we're going to get those?
Yes.
Can you just briefly articulate what you think it is?
So, so it's only a month into the year.
Of course. I don't think it happens now, but moving forward.
We, I'll let you know when we have to make transfers, yes. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. How is that process going to go? Is it going to be monthly? You know, we've had this debate before.
Yep.
So if you know, projected-wise, you're going to need to have a transfer, I, for one, don't want to wait until May or March, and then we have no choice. So are we going to get monthly transfers, so that when you know, we know, projected?
I will, I will do them as often, as often as we need to. So, our, our normal practice right now is we do them quarterly, but if it's something that's required at that time, we'll, I'll do it.
At least projected, is what I'm saying.
Yes. And I, and I'll let you know ahead of time on the reports with notations of what, you know, may or may not be going over, so.
We're projected to be over, so therefore we need a transfer. That's all.
Yes.
And I don't, I don't see any now, because it's too early in the year.
Correct.